We can please stand with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam clerk, could you call the wall, please?
Lori Borjo.
Coming.
Ah, Lori Borjo is here. Kelsey Cook?
Here.
Maureen Helma?
Yes.
Allison Kemp?
Yes.
Jacob Nicosio?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda is approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Motion made by Nicosio, seconded by Helma. Any discussion? Think none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Next up is call to the public. This is our first occasion for a public comment. If anyone would like to address counsel, please feel free to step up to the podium and give us your name. You can may state your address as well. This is for anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak under public comments? Okay. Item number six is presentations. We have the downtown development authorities recognition of Dorothy Johnson, thirteen years of service. We'll have Executive Director Westbrook and Dorothy come up.
No.
Come on, Maureen. You guys want to come up here? We have some of our board members here. Come on. Kelsey from downtown too. Yeah, I just wanted to recognize Dorothy. You know, she's been on the board for thirteen years and just given so much. And we're just so appreciative. And I just wanted her to be recognized and just thank her publicly for her service and also let you all know that she will be missed very much. So, thank you very much. And we appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Super sweet. Appreciate it.
Do you guys want to say anything?
No, nothing.
You're good.
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Will you be in it since you're on the board?
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
I didn't know how I got in here.
It's going to end the podium because I don't want to.
There's something after that. It's fine.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Give them the microphone now.
Yeah, probably it's better.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you. She won't be a stranger. You'll still be downtown. So, we'll see her.
All right. Next on the agenda is our consent agenda. First, we have our receiving file items. Is there a motion for seven A?
I'm making motion to approve single file consent to that items A, one, two.
Support. Motion made by Helma, seconded by Kemp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion carries. Seven, do we have a good of a motion, please?
If there's no changes, I'm making motion to approve. I did not consent to that item B, one, two, and three, including the bills, amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, a hundred and forty-seven dollars, and forty-four cents.
Support. Motion made by Helma, seconded by Borjo. Roll call rule, please.
Borjo?
Yes.
Nicosio?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Item eight, unfinished old business, the PVD project update at thirty-two East Burdick. Mr. Medor?
Oh, he ducked out for a minute. He went to fetch something from his office.
Somebody write that down for the performance evaluation.
Just pass it.
Okay. The purchasing ordinance amendments item eight be update.
Same guy.
Same guy.
I can just tell you this, that he's got a little bit to say, but we do it beyond next meeting for the second.
On February thirteenth, for public hearing?
For public hearing.
Okay.
Joe, we're on the purchasing ordinance, your little update. No, we asked over the first one.
We had a question last month about whether the purchasing for the local preference should be a may or shall. And we were with Bob Davis, then between Bob being out of town and, you know, we didn't get that time to get it in the paper for the public hearing. So, we're going to schedule that for February.
And we're going with the.
Yeah. What they approved last, the first reading was the percentages, the shall or may. That's what gives me the good for the time deep, right?
The only.
May gets you into great.
The only hesitation I have on the word may is permissive, meaning discretionary, meaning to, you know, evaluations of subject. So, the shall is probably cleaner for your administrative staff. Where it has to be an exercise of discretion. We did talk about a middle ground of potentially having the council be an arbiter of the matter. But I still think that that's clogs up the system too.
You still have the language in there about they have to do all everything else being equal, beginning bidders, and the value of the work and stuff like that.
They have to meet all the criteria of being a common bidder. It's not just a shoe in.
Right. I'm more comfortable with the shall. Does counsel have any other, any questions or concerns about this? I mean, we're going to take it up to next month anyway.
Yeah. I think you should think about that. It just, it places a lot of discretionary burden on your staff.
So, we can revisit those language in the future as well.
Yeah, if we see how it's going. Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any counsel discussion you're having on this before we move back to eight A? No? Okay. So, we'll go back to eight A. We're looking for an update on thirty-two East. Mr. Medor?
Okay. Mr. Wechel was in today. I think I just saw him entertain. Nope, not yet. The light poles are at his supplier. They're a little ahead of schedule. He hopes to have them delivered in a week or so. He's having trouble still getting feedback. Feedback from DTE, i.e. I have to talk to some other product and ask late this afternoon to see if perhaps they can give us an application. We do have a backup plan, perhaps, to wire it in from a neighboring property for the lights. But we're still hoping to get further feedback from DPW on that permanent solution for that wiring. They could be installed, though, sooner than the plant version. We were expecting it sometime in February. Now, the rattlesnake supplier was just in metro. Hopefully, they'll be delivered in the next few weeks. It's new up.
Mr. Wechel, you just joined us. Thank you for attending. Is there any, and Mr. Medor just gave us an update on the lights being at the.
Yes.
Have come in. Is there any, if there's anything else you want to say, do you mind stepping up to the podium?
Don't want to hear us.
Sorry, I'm late.
No worries. Good evening.
Dean Wechel, longtime resident, friend of ours. As far as an update goes, I did talk with Joe earlier today. Our light poles and heads are in, they're in Sterling Heights. I don't have a delivery date. They're just, I don't know why, other than the salesman's been sick, because I called to find out where my lights were. That's where I found out. So, I hope they'll be here next week and we'll get them installed, especially if we have some nice weather again like we did, you know, a week ago. Two weeks will have been perfect. So, that's all we've been waiting for. And, oh, the survey. I've met with Mr. Kennedy. Kennedy has done all our surveying on that site and actually all my surveying and all my projects. And he said it'd be under two weeks. So, I'm thinking it might be thirty days, but just in case. He's going to have three separate parcels. It'll be Site A, Site C, and the parking lot. And he'll, he's going to stake it six inches behind the curb and it goes to the property line on the east, north, and south. And on the inside, on the west side of it, it goes behind the curbs that are in place. So, it'll be the whole parking lot, one legal description.
Once we get those legal descriptions, we can process the split combination, get it down the county, get all the parking lots running.
Do we have a public comment yet?
We did earlier in the agenda. We do have the second one later in the agenda, so.
Can I do one now, since I was late?
Sure.
It's real quick.
Okay.
I'd like to reserve my comments on the northeast quadrant parking lot for that particular item, when it's being discussed. And I'd like to reserve comments of other property orders in that same quadrant, which would be Brett and Don and Dorothy Johnson. And I'm sure John and Maureen want to say something. I think that's all property orders, unless I'm wrong. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Did you name Brett?
I did first, I think. Didn't you do first?
Yeah.
I missed.
Okay. So, I think we're finished with item eight then. We'll move on to item nine, A, the DDA tip plan. We need to, it looks like we just need to move to set a public hearing, is that all?
Yeah. We haven't really received a formal recommendation from the DDA to us yet, but they're in the process of doing that. I expect they'll do that this month's meeting. And, but then the, everything is set for the public hearing. We've sent notices out to the taxing authorities indicating a public hearing at the February council meeting already.
Okay.
And once they get us the form, we'll do together, put together the ordinance and stuff for the adoption as well at the February meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry. Did you say you do need a motion for that, or it's set for February?
You might. We already have it printed out and out for that date.
Okay. So, you're, this is just an update then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just want to make you aware, because we put this on the agenda in case we heard any, part of that issue with DDA, when you send out the notices to the public taxing authorities, they have the opportunity to come and request again the agenda. We had it on the agenda in case we got any, we can receive any.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next on their new business, nine B is a northeast parking lot layout and usage discussion. So, this agenda item is for counsel's discussion, and then we'll hear from anyone who wants to talk to this item under public comment. So, you will be speaking after counsel has had a chance to initially discuss it. I assume that's why we have a larger audience today. But that will just be basically the next agenda item. So, we'll have counsel discuss first and then hear from whoever would like to speak to that or anything else under public comment. So, so nine B, Mr. Medor, you want to kind of just give an.
So, in the packet, you'll see, one of the items you'll see is the zoning compliance form issued by the building official and March twenty-eight, twenty-three issued to the property owner who recently purchased the property. There's also parking requirements. This parcel is in the parking reduction district, as noted in the ordinance, section seven point one point nine. There are some other areas that are in C one quarter zoning that wouldn't fall under the parking exemption district, such as, if you see on the map there in the corner, Oxford Bank and the corner of Stanton and Washington. That is the C one quarter zone property. And if, in fact, they were to do the similar thing, the parking requirements for that type of place of assembly, which is based, parking demand is generated by occupancy rather than floor area, such as banks, hallways, theaters, et cetera. It's one space per three persons permitted at maximum occupancy. So, that's what the parking requirements would be if they weren't in the parking reduction districts. So, giving you an idea of what the zoning ordinance looks for, for this type of a business. But if you see in section seven point one point nine A, where it says any permitted principal use or use permitted after special approval located on the first or second floor of a building shall be exempted from providing the required number of parking spaces per section seven point one point nine. Knowing that, we've been concerned about what's going to happen over there in that district. Obviously, we knew eventually there was going to be some additional parking in the southeast part, but the northeast part is relatively full at times. I did put together a aerial indicating various parking numbers that are there currently. Mr. Wechel did order today as well. And one of the items I did talk to Mr. Wechel about today too is if you look at the map, the provided, it shows all the various spaces. The village has agreement with the church there, thirty-three East Burdick, to use the spaces on the north side and on the south side on the corner of Mill and Burdick, East Burdick. So, there's sixty-three spaces of church parking that's available to the public, except for during church services. There is a sign posted on the south parking lot of Burdick and Mill there indicating that. I spoke to the church and asked if they would mind if we also signed the north lot, that same effect, and they're fine with that. Don has already got the sign ordered. It'll be posted on the light post up there on the north side of the church. I see people parking there now, especially locals who know it's approved, agreement between the village and the church. But just to make sure, especially if you're going to have weddings or other events, or people just coming to town who aren't as familiar with it, we want to make sure that's signed properly up there in that north lot above the church. I think the total number for all the spaces, including the ones, the private spaces on the north end, it was two oh three. And we have three restaurants. We have Red Knaps. We have cabbages and a restaurant for food service per se, but they do have takeout deliveries there. Then you have Homegrown Brewery. And then there's an ownership change happening at Woodchips, which will be another restaurant place, I believe. They have some parking in the front of the building where most others don't. And they have a little bit of their own private parking on the backside. So, the question is, what are we going to do when there's other events? I talked to Chief Majestic today to give a little heads up about some of the inquiries tonight might be, how many people can go into this bank facility? And it's all based on the occupancy load they determine. I don't know if the applicant really knows for sure. He did go and install the fire suppression line. First part of November, they tapped in, ran the suppression line in the building, which then allowed them to go over ninety-nine. Is that the number without chief?
Yes.
Yep. So, if they hadn't put the suppression in, they would have kept it ninety-nine. So, they do do the fire suppressions if it came over that amount. So, at that point, it comes how many people will, the occupancy will be, multiple tables and chairs and stuff in there, and that's yet to be determined. But for instance, if they had a hundred and fifty people in there, the ordinance would call out they need fifty spaces. And, yeah, you go by there, there's a lot of parking being used there currently. A few of the businesses closed or gone in the evening hours. You know, the pregnancy center and the school administration building. I'm not sure the hours in North Broadway, but I don't think they're open past five or six much. Is that six?
Six.
Okay. So, the evenings are pretty much dominated by the high use of restaurants and bars.
And the weekends.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I assume events, I mean, they're either going to be like. Yeah, on the weekends, or they're going to be starting around noon for like showering and stuff, or like weddings, when you start till later. But it'd probably be like four, so those people would get in before the dinner crowd, most likely. So, okay.
And there may be some smaller things going on throughout the week. Sometimes people in the area might go for a spot for a funeral dinner.
Yeah.
Things like that, but those typical dinner, whatever, the wedding. There might be utilization during that time, though, midweek, midday. So, we talked to Mr. Wechel on some of the history about it today. You know, it's like there aren't really good options for additional parking in there. We're lucky to have the sixty-three spaces that the church allows to possess. Nearly a third is parking back there. The parking lot on the north end, which is owned by Mr. Dave Parker, privately de-owned, thirty-nine spaces. I'm sure some people in forty north utilize that space as well. There's a question whether or not that could be cordoned off, I guess, between from the rest of the lots. I know years ago, there was a spot with that around town and all the issue of it, but we know it's a purchase, previous owner.
So, twenty-eight North Washington owns the thirty-nine parking spaces. Same owner?
Same owner, yes. Mr. and Mrs. Powers are here. They're over there. They run the business of Homegrown Brewery. Their landlord owns that thirty-nine private. A lot of people assume it's village parking just because it's located.
It was.
Yeah, and it's where it's at. Even the twenty-four spaces there behind twenty-two North, I included a copy of the lease in the packet that was done in ninety-seven. That's technically private property, but the new owner obviously is aware of the lease and plot, but that's dedicated to public space, public parking. So, it's a problem, and I don't, nobody knows how bad it will be until, you know, the usage happens and things come together.
And what authority, if any, does the village have in this? I mean, I know, obviously policing, if there's certain signs put up, but other than that, I mean, what can we do? Or we're just, I mean, we're going to work together?
I don't have the ordinance for that.
Oh, you mean the.
Yeah.
Do we know the terms of lease?
Ninety-nine years, and we're twenty-six years into it.
Can we break it? I mean, is that even.
We paid for it, and we paid, the village paid seventy-one thousand dollars for it for ninety-nine years, and it can be renewed ninety-nine years later. That, otherwise, it could be, it would be just private parking. So, that enabled it to be used for public parking. RDBW maintains it, plows it, things like that.
That's just the twenty-four spaces?
Yes. We don't have anything lease wise with the church. That's just an agreement in writing that they allow us to use it. Part of that is for us to plow and do light maintenance on, like little potable patching and stuff. But that's, there's no term to that. It's a kind of renewing, ongoing thing, and there was no money transaction involved with that, which is like a agreement between the two parties. So, again, back to your question, I don't know what options we have for enforcement. I talked to John Bradley before. What about putting some markers along the closure spots where it was indicated? Two-hour parking or, it comes down to enforcement at that point, just like if the north lot was cordoned off. If it was completely blocked off, that would be different. But if it was just signed, and it was say Homegrown Brewery parking only on the private lot, then that'd be an enforcement problem like they all have. Some people will recognize and obey the signs and similar.
Right. So, the reason, I'm just wondering, not against, obviously, counsel talking about this, this is in our community. We want to make sure we have a positive outcome for everybody, but why is it, why is it something that's on?
Well, I was requested to, please have discussion about it. I think you were approached, and I thought, with the discussion we had in parking lot in southwest that we had, and we were trying to make some things arrangements there to protect the wall.
Yeah.
Part of the indication I got out of that was counsel wanted to take the part of those kind of decisions.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel, any questions, challenge, discussion to get us started?
So, just so I understand, I found this, I'm a little, I just don't mature it. Thirty-nine spaces that you have indicated on here for lease, those are included already in the numbers for the parking downtown. We're going to have about ninety-nine potentially people coming to the arc glass, and we have to have parking for basically thirty-three new spots is what I'm assuming.
Well, I think there's, might be higher than that. He was going to be limited to ninety-nine, had he not put the first suppression in. He did install a first suppression, he could have, he could have a hundred and eighty people in there, which would mean sixty spaces. Again, not that we can require them that, but that's what the ordinance would require if it wasn't in the parking reduction.
If they're in a vacant room.
Maybe your, maybe your ordinance is a one-third.
Right.
Yeah, maybe one, one for every.
That's what it is?
On this particular usage.
For this usage?
Even though it's in the parking reduction district?
No. There's none.
That would be, that would be.
The normal requirement would be.
Right.
Right. Gives you an idea of what we thought in the planning orders thinks would be utilized for that type of use, just so it's comparable.
That's okay.
But you should be reminded that you've said it was a shall, is that it?
Right. So, they do not have to have additional parking at all?
They don't have any ones.
Right. That's what I thought.
All right. I'm trying to get, just make sure I clarify that the big picture of all the parking and all the quadrants, so we utilize space efficiently. And I know, Vinnie talked about perhaps like shuttling and whatnot. So, the property on Mill Street in East Burdick adds, how many spaces I just had there written down, fifty-eight. And then Oxford Bank, that is allowed to be used by us as well.
We don't, I don't think we have any formal agreement. People do use it.
Okay, I guess that was what I was asking, because I'm trying to just get a grasp on the big picture.
How many spaces are in that bank?
There's two hundred and eight of what I'm showing here on this page.
Yeah.
In this area.
And I know that it's not like the perfect solution, just trying to get a grasp on all of our options or all of our.
Are we lying sufficient? I mean, just talking about parking efficiency, are we using our spaces the best right now? Could we open up another twenty just by repaying?
I, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
I think the layout, the way it is configured, I think we're getting every inch that we can out of it.
We use the standard, right, Don? We use the regular standard, and it's engineered that way.
Yeah. And all of, all of the part, that's all been paved new, you know, from the twenty-five spaces down all the way out to East Burdick. That's all been engineered and maximized to get the most spaces in there. There's a few on the arc behind eight North Washington here, the curb line, but those are for like takeout, fifteen-minute takeout parking. So, that's up to me implemented during the COVID area for the shutdown, where to help the restaurant out, their Red Knaps. And it worked well enough that we made sure, leave them there when we configured the parking lot. I think we have three spaces there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And those all work out pretty well for your takeout, correct?
Yeah.
So, those aren't showing on here. I'm tempted to move, if not at all.
Are those clearly labeled?
Yes. They're signage.
Because, I mean, you have to worry about this type of usage coming in, what spots and not spots are going to be used.
I think it says fifteen minutes. It doesn't say on the sign, it says takeout, fifteen minutes. So, one of the options, I know, I'm not around here as much, because some of the evenings when I'm here, I'll go by the parking lot at the front of the church at the corner of Mill and East Burdick, and there's twenty-five spaces there. And oftentimes, that's very underutilized. It's kind of far for employees to walk, but maybe there's some additional employees in the area that could be directly to park over there to create more spaces, more directly behind the businesses.
Yeah.
But that, that's an internal decision that, you know, the business owners have to make.
So, in my mind, okay, so ideally, you would want, you know, how this would normally be regulated?
I'm sorry, Kelsey.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that you can, I know we're all trying to understand it, but I was just going to say, like, so normally, you'd have whatever number of spots per expected people, but because of the parking reduction district, that all goes up the window. And so, in reality, people are going to just come in and park wherever is most convenient for them. And so, the homegrown business has this thirty-nine spaces, which even if only their guests, customers park there, they're still going to need more space, right? So, even if we agree to, you know, enforce no parking except for homegrown customers, which I don't know how it would be possible, people are still going to park in their space. I don't know that the village can find additional parking anywhere, because it looks like we have everything. It's just going to be a matter of literally who gets there first.
Forgive me. If it's a private lot, can we police that anyways? Wouldn't it be?
Yeah, we wouldn't do the enforcement on that part. It's an enforcement issue, but that'd be private enforcement. Yeah, we wouldn't enforce on private parking.
I mean, since the owners are going to have, we'll hear from them, but, you know, they're going to have to obviously do every little thing to make sure people park as where they should be and make recommendations, but not everybody listens. So, that's why I want to be help, I want counsel to be helpful and however we can, and I'm glad this is, you know, for village manager and DPW are going to be working on this. It's good to get, to keep us in the loop, I suppose, but I'm just saying this all to say that it's going to be tough. And I don't see a solution right now. So, I'm interested to hear, maybe through public comment, if there are some proposed solutions. But it's not that we're the, we're not really going to judge on it necessarily, so.
What about the through road?
The one going north there, the old Edison?
Right, yeah, because if you blocked that off, just, I guess, if you blocked it off and you weren't allowed to go through there, you could use the whole back part of that, that parking lot as well too, right?
That's an agreement we have with Edison Company for ingress, egress, and we plow it, I think, for them. That's kind of. It's, it's, if you're two-way traffic, we'll use it now. If you were going to do any parking along there, I think you would have to restrict it to one way traffic. Yeah, if you possibly get any parking spaces along the edge, but I don't, we would have to be permission for something like that, I believe, from Edison. It's a two-way, three-way right now, because they probably use both ways themselves.
Would you mind looking into that, seeing if that is even a viable option?
Because I think. Because I think, I mean, the other thing, like, okay, so number one, they're probably bringing all their big, heavy trucks through our nice new parking lot that we just paid for.
I don't, we don't see much over there, do we, Dan? No.
You know, and then I would only think, the only other thing we're blocking there is traffic by those residential buildings there as well too. Just thinking outside the box, I guess.
Like, I could check and see if there's any parallel parking option, again, but then we would have to sign that one-way, because there's definitely not room for parallel parking and two-way traffic. But it's an option to check and do.
I've always felt, and this is just me, sitting with the planning vision for five-hundred years, I don't think the lot, the lots are designed to the best, to get the most number of spaces. I'm not saying you could get five-hundred more spaces, but, you know, we always had a piece here that we just paved it compared to what we already had. And I think if, if we raised all the parking and really looked at our ordinance and planned the parking lot, we could get more spaces, not a hundred more spaces, maybe, you know, this is a long parking lot. If this was planned out properly, we could maybe get another twenty spaces in there. When you do an angled parking, angled parking spaces are only nine feet wide. And then are ten feet wide. So, you gotta account for the angle, but you might be able to squeeze some more spaces in there, if you can design a lot properly, so there's actually a flow to the traffic.
So, the, this was taken before the new paving project, this area, it's been restrikted, of course, but there, it's pretty similar to what it was before, right? There are some spots over there by the dumpster that you really can't see, hide it here, but they're there in combat. So, except for the thirty-nine to the north, everything coming down to the behind the buildings out to East Berdick is all new and newly designed and strikted. Parking spaces, of course, are private, and those are, those are laid out as good as long as you're gonna go, but... I mean, I could always add, ask Row for a comparative, say, or if this was laid out different, do you find any other additional spaces? We could check and see if there's...
I just believe, if the whole thing has to be a bowling sleeve, though, I mean, the aisleways will have to be moved, and everything would have to be adjusted.
Would we, I mean, i- is it even the possibility to look into purchasing those thirty-nine private spaces? I mean, yeah, they're, they're, are we, I mean, are we allowed to use them, or is that everybody's misconception is that the business, the business owners would, would not necessarily do that? So, if we can dictate what happens in those parking spots, all of the overflow could naturally go there, and I think it would at least give us an additional, potentially eighty people that we could fit in this general area, but...
It's currently being used by the public, so I would better just warn you, this means people in town that know it's private and treated such. So, yeah, for all intents and purposes, it's being used as public lot right now, right or wrong way. And again, there's a handful of spots out front, I don't know how many's down there, is this, is the older configuration, but all from very north is probably on about eight spots, I would say.
Any other council discussion at this time?
I think, I think probably the best foot forward would be to have messaging about what parking is available and extend teams' all quadrants wisely. I know that new business owner talked about shuttles and whatnot, but just to use space efficiently, as efficiently as we can.
I think that's something we could do. I mean, I'd like, I mean, we could even put like a public parking map on the website, so someone doesn't need to see all the different options.
Because they would benefit all the quadrants, I think, sometimes they're so focused and concentrated that there's no parking right there.
Yeah.
Which I know is not a perfect solution, I mean, people...
Something we can do, though.
I know some of the wayfinding and parking direction signs was something that the DDA talked about, and, and a few years ago, and it's continued to do so, so to add some wayfinding signs in the DDA downtown area, just to help direct people.
Yeah, because I think some people, you know, if they don't find a spot right behind a business, they're likely to leave. Yeah, and so, they don't realize that there's other parking lots that aren't really that much further, so...
But also have to be approved by NMDA?
Depends where they're at, not only at NMDA right away.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think the village, we can do a better job with, yeah, providing information as to where there is parking, so that people don't leave our downtown, just because they don't think they can find a spot when there's one not too far away, so... Any other discussion at this time? Okay, we will move to, I intend, there's no, I don't do it from consent agenda, so go to public comment. So, public comment is, has to be for the public to address council, so we can't address each other or members in the audience, and you shouldn't be responding to what other people are saying, you should be speaking to council, so I'm interested in hearing any ideas or solutions that you have that we can help with, particularly, I think, would be productive public comment for us. Obviously, you're welcome to speak to whatever you wish. Please direct your comments to me and to council, and I, I'm not gonna set a timer, because I think this is an important topic, and I want everybody to have sufficient time to speak, but if you're becoming repetitive, I may ask you to wrap it up, or if it's something that we've heard before. So, with that, Executive Westbrook, would you like to go first, just to kind of set the stage?
Yeah, so this is, the parking is definitely an issue that we've heard a lot about, not only with the new owner, but also with so many business owners that I get to work with on a daily basis, and a lot of them in that quad I'm very close to and talk to on a weekly basis. So, I just wanted to let them know that the DDA is definitely concerned and trying to find solutions. A couple of things that we've talked about with the new owners of the building and with Joe that we've kicked around, is him working with the marketplace, which is down out of town, and having that as a stop where he would be able to shuttle in, and he already has spoken to NODA, and that would be an area, because a lot of those businesses are also closing around five, six o'clock, and they don't utilize that whole parking lot, that was one option, that he said, you know, they could communicate that out from the beginning, so if it is a larger wedding party, that that would be the premier parking spot, and then they would shuttle them in from there. The other one that he was talking with, that we set up a conversation with, was Oxford Bank, because that is more of a private lot, but again, you know, after five o'clock, it really isn't being utilized, and they've always been really great to us at letting us park for events there. So, those are just two options where I think he is trying to find solutions. Obviously, we've raised our concerns to him about the other businesses, and same thing, I think you just said, Kelsey, if they can't pull up right behind a restaurant and go in, it's really hard, but if you're spending six or seven hours at a wedding venue, it is a little bit easier to stomach parking further away, and you're going to that place, right? You're not driving to a wedding, and if you can't find parking, not going in. So, I think it's really about communication, it's about a lot of signage, marketing material, I love the idea about the parking, we could add that to the new downtown map that we just produced. But I think it's really working together with village council, with the DDA, the owners, and then the restaurant and business owners, to make it work for everybody. It is a good thing for our town to have people coming in to, you know, weddings and events like this, because it does put our town in the spotlight, and I do think we'll get a lot of people from out of town, but I absolutely feel the pain of the other business owners and how frightened they might be. So, I just wanted to pitch out those two ideas, and just to note that the DDA is working with them. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Chief Majestic, would you like to...
Thank you. I was, I was hoping you were gonna ask me about this before we got to public comment, so that you could make better, more informed, or have a better informed understanding of what that occupancy is actually rated at. That occupancy, depending, once we get our final, once it's done and we do our final, there will be a final determination of occupancy, but as it is right now drawn up through the architecture, that, of the plans that we have, it's rated into two-hundred-and-eighty people, which really turns into a, a little over ninety, I think ninety-two or ninety-three parking spots that you need to accommodate for that facility. And I know you talked about parking along by where the, the utility worker trucks go through there. Remember that we have to maintain that as a fire lane, we have to maintain all the property along the back of that, those businesses as a fire lane as well. So, there's not gonna be any kind of give and take, especially on that utility road in the back, that we have to maintain the ability to go in there. So, we'd have to be looking at that as well. But again, right now, two-hundred-and-eighty people-ish, depending on what the final buildup looks like for us to review, okay?
Will, will you repeat the number of parking spaces estimated?
Well, it's three, three per person, or three per, yeah, so, you know...
That's for ninety-three.
Ninety-three, ninety-two or ninety-three, I think, is the official parking requirements or needs according to the plans from the architect. So...
Am I asking you, do you, does the addition of tables and chairs, will that change it?
The, the layout, yeah, there's gonna, it's gonna have a, it's gonna play a part, yes, but overall, the, and this, because this also takes into account workers as well, so they, they count as part of the occupancy, so, you know, things to think about with that. The other thing is too, remember, when do people have baby shower and wedding showers? They're on more so on Saturday afternoons and Sundays, when the church is gonna be in, you know, in operation as well. So, their spots are their spots during church hours, right? So, that is, you know, a concern for everybody as well. So, I just wanted you guys to have a full...
Yeah, thank you.
Because once I talked to Mr. Regarde, myself and Fire Marshal Franz, we pulled the plans to see what the final update was, based off the drawings. And again, once we have the final buildup done, and we go to do the final, that's when we'll have a final determination of whatever occupancy will be, including guests and employees and all of that.
Okay.
All right?
Very cool, yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, we'd like to speak under public comment.
Dave Westbrook, sounds like your conversations are all headed in the right direction. We need to accommodate another business, obviously, it's already been permitted, and we all have a problem with our parking. There's a lot of facts that you're not familiar with, and I don't want to go into all of them tonight, so we take too long, and I think we should have a, a study group of some type, and maybe the village manager, village attorney, a council member or two, planning commission member, and members of concern of, to, of the public.
I think that's a great idea. We're definitely not gonna solve it tonight, it'll be nice to get everyone on the road straight and talk back and forth, yeah.
But I, I have some documents I'll share with Bob or Joe tomorrow that you'd be very surprised with, and I want you to know that there was, the comment was made that the village paid seventy-one thousand dollars for the Williams property. Well, there's five families that paid two-hundred thousand dollars into the parking fund. We created that parking district. There was no parking district in that quadrant, we created, the village created, parking district four, we funded, and that was the reason that there's one item in that ordinance that we were very specific about, one parcel that was trying to slide in without contributing, and, and we want to make sure that's ratified. Yeah, I see it still is, I thought maybe you took it out of the ordinance.
Oh, it's still, it's still there.
It's still there, yeah. Well, there's, there's, I have another document that, a council member, that still sits on the board, which is awesome, and they, they questioned why there were two other parcels that were noted in that parking district. Well, when we do all this research, I think that's all gonna be answered, and you'll find that we need to have a parking fund created by the village, we need to have businesses that require additional parking due to change of occupancy, change of use, develop property, if they don't have, if they can't provide it, they need to put it in the fund, and the village should have a plan in place, whether it's stacked, you know, two-story parking decks, additional purchases, something has to be in place. Because as a developer, I sat on the DDA board for a long time, and I always said, if I come to Oxford and I want to develop a piece of property, and I tell you where it is, and you say, okay, you're gonna need twenty spaces, and I said, well, I don't have room with this building that so far has been approved. They said, well, you just pay six thousand dollars, and we'll give you, you a permit. Well, okay, now, where's my parking? Well, there was never an answer, and there still isn't an answer, and that's been a long time ago. This parking district was created in nineteen ninety-six, and I think I was in grade school then, but you're not. And, you know, the, the powers, they, they invested their life in it at Homegrown, and they have a beautiful business, beautiful building, and they're gonna have problems, unfortunately. You know, the Knapp family, the Johnsons, well, Johnsons don't own it anymore. Properties change title, and, you know, obligations, monetary, money, you know, monetary obligations usually don't change, you know, they pass on to the next person, try to put it up, pass it on to the next. Well, can't pass it on anymore, can't keep doing that. We don't want to have barricaded parking lots, we don't want to have entrances to our access for the fire department, the police department, the ambulances, where our parking lot, we need to figure out how we can handle this, and I, there is a few things that can be done, but it's gonna all cost money, unfortunately, like everything. That's all I have to say for now, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Powers?
Yes, I'm John Powers, I live in Reed, we own Homegrown. When, when it was first taken over, the building next to us, you know, we had heard, oh, they're gonna have occupancy under a hundred, and, okay, that's thirty cars, okay? Now, he's advertising and stuff saying two-hundred-and-eighty, and so, you're talking a lot more. Our, that, that parking lot is extremely busy, between NAPS, us, and Grabcap, Riches, or, you know, there, there's a lot of people using that parking lot. We, the restaurant parking for us, the, the most critical times are around six o'clock. Now, on a weekend, especially on weekends, you get a wedding venue, if he has a wedding, that's gonna be by six o'clock, they're gonna get there, they're gonna park, but they're not gonna be like restaurant people that are leaving after an hour and a half, two hours, they're gonna be there all night. And that, you know, you, you take away our parking spaces, and we already have it. Oh, yeah, I wanted to come to your place, but I can't get in that parking lot. You know, that, that, that's happened, and, you know, that, that, that could destroy us, it really could. So, I plan on talking with Dave Parker and getting him to give me some advice on what to do, and, and see, see what he, he can propose to, so I don't know what to do. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments and concerns, I understand.
Sorry, I'm under arrest, I came...
None at all.
Rodney, concerned citizens here. Yeah, and there, there's a lot to unpack here, I agree with what everybody said. You know, that parking lot is gonna be a big problem, obviously, you know, that's what we're all talking about. Joe, you mentioned towards Berdick, you know, that's kind of underutilized, you know, some of those nights on Friday nights. It is odd that that does seem to be the last thing that people go to, I don't know if people still think of that as John Burt's, and, but that being said, that's a few spots. Usually, it's just jammed all the way down. And one of my concerns is, you know, we've had a great partnership with the church, but I wonder how great that partnership's gonna make, you know, stay if their lot is just packed. packed all the time, and, you know, they're the ones that, I mean, repairs and the lights, but, you know, if that was my lot, and I just saw it filled up all the time, I might think, jeez, no, but, but we're getting, taking advantage here a little bit, I mean, that would be my concern. My, one question that I have is Edison Alley, does that property line, does that go into the grass? Does anybody know?
Yes, has it been north? Edison property does go into the grass, so I'm, yes.
You know, it was talked about years ago, putting angled parking, you know, make, not cutting it off, but making it one-way and getting angled parking down off that alley. I don't know if that's possible.
There are some drain structures there, but I suppose they could be reconfigured into a paved portion, they're already in the grass area now, but we can put drainage in the parking lot as well if it was paved, that's, except, one of the options for me to look at is either, parallel parking on existing pavement would make it quite narrow, right? You'd be one lane, one way for sure, and possibly too narrow. But if you get angled parking off, but Edison David for that, that might be, but that's what we have to prove from DPD.
All that being said, you know, I, you know, we talked about putting our employees over in the church, and I've been lax on, you know, getting my employees back as far as they should be, I was much tougher on that earlier on, but obviously, with this happening, we're going to have to really enforce that a lot, but like I said, I hope, I hope our relationship stays as good as it has been with the church, and it's been really, really good. There's, I have probably four other things, and I can't remember them all, but, but it does sound like we're, you know, everybody's on the same page. I mean, this is, you know, crisis, I mean, it's, like, like you said, I mean, if they come in at four o'clock, park all night long, I mean, we just, we don't have a chance, so. I'm glad everybody's taking it seriously, and if there is any, what, what would you propose, Dave, a special meeting or?
Well, we need to have a group session of some type.
Yeah.
All of our interests are priorities.
Yeah, I think that would be tremendous.
We can help and set that up as well.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Hi there, I'm Don Johnston, we don't really have a dog in the race anymore as we sold the building, but my concern is with all these change of ownership that's been going on, is that we pay good money, like Dave said, there were five families, and we had to pay, and there was a struggle out of our business month after month, we had to pay that assessment to pay for that parking lot. And so, with the change of ownership, like Dave said, we need to have a special meeting, there's a lot of verbiage and a lot of documents that Dave and I dug up that we should have been reimbursed, and we haven't. So, now you're talking about maybe doing angled parking and repaving, who's going to pay for that? Is the new wedding venue going to pay for that, or is the village going to pay for that? Because we had to pay, so I just wanted to be on record today, just saying with all this change of ownership going on, that we still have to be reimbursed. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else under, would you like to speak under public comment? Supervisor, please. In the corner being quiet.
I've been told you don't want to hear my opinion.
Are you finally listening?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments, we do appreciate them, and it's good to hear, you know, your thoughts, this is obviously important to the village council, we're all in this together, we want our downtown to be successful, we work very closely with the DDA and everyone, and we want people to continue to come to Oxford because, you know, it's an amazing community, and we have great things to offer. So, we will work with Mr. Madore to set up, I think it'd be, it's a great idea to have kind of a work group.
Some sort of community.
Yeah, yeah, a couple of councils, two of the council members would be able to participate without violating, making it an open meeting, which we don't want necessarily, kind of want to, maybe we can use the community room or something like that. So, we'll circulate some information and find some times and make sure whoever's interested can attend, so, thank you.
The, the documents that you speak of, can, could we?
I could share a couple with you tonight.
Could we get, or could we, could copy this?
Or Joe, sure.
I mean, some of us were around, remember, when they barricaded the parking lot overnight, and we came in in the morning, and there was pay for park, pay for parking, and we've been through, went all the way to Supreme Court to condemn some of them, to get some of the parking, right? But you, you were, you were involved, and I was involved all the way to the highest level of the court system, and I just hate to see that turmoil brew again, we have to figure this out. Parking in that particular quadrant has a long history.
Sounds like it.
Has a long history of, yeah.
As far as I know, it's the only quadrant that had to pay for it.
I think, I think you're right, and I remember the issue, but Don, a year ago in the morning, we got, we got there, and there were, they had set up, they were going to form a pay-for-parking block, they already had the structures out there, remember, we had to run into court and figure that out? It was, it was a history here, so. Any documents that you have, Mr. Weckel, that we could look at in advance of the meeting, so we can come to the table semi-educated, or at least as educated as you guys are?
Maybe we should, can I speak from back here?
You don't mind coming back at us, I'll be honest about it.
Dave, we were trying to lure you back to the podium.
I don't even like public speaking. I'm really busy, but I, I want to do this, I want to get it done as soon as we can, and my administrative assistant, who speaks with me, is in Florida. So, it's going to be a little more difficult for me to go through my fifty-foot of filing cabinets, I mean, we do have labels, but even so, it still takes time, as you all know. And I'll do the best I can, but I think if I, if I can meet with Joe and Bob maybe, or at least Joe first, possibly with the property owners that are involved, and we come up with a list of things that we think are appropriate, then Bob can review and say, yeah, do this, do that, do that, so I'm not doing unnecessary things. Bob was co-council through all of us, as far as I know, every document I've seen so far, you were co-council with Bob Bunny.
Which means I was counsel.
I didn't say that. Bob's a good man.
He would agree.
Yeah, and I just think it'd be a little bit easier for us, and then we would feel very, I know I would feel very confident then, that, or at least our side, we'll call it, is presented in a proper fashion, rather than me trying to present it, and what I think's logical isn't always what's logical, so, so we don't waste council's time, you have a lot of things to worry about. And one of the first things you do is create a parking fund. I just think it'd be a good thing, whether it's, doesn't matter where it is, it's for the community.
Give, give us what you have, Dave, when we get started, I'll pull out my sixteen files of litigation on this matter.
I have the three with relative. Okay.
Yes, thank you, appreciate your time. Any other public comment before we move on?
Sorry, I just brought in one of those four things. Just, real quick, this isn't, by any means, a short-term solution, but I know there's been talk about those three houses back there on E Street, you know, if those could be purchased and turned into parking, you know, it's something to think about long-term, it's not going to do us any favors in the near future, but just kind of want to put that out there.
One of them's a brand who own, very happy to finally be owning the home that they were renting. The one adjacent to Edison Alley.
The last condemnation went all the way to the Supreme Court as well. We have, we have some internal.
Okay, very, very good.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I think nonetheless, we'll move on to our committee reports. NDA for, for Joe? Okay, no response. Planning commission and cable commission, no?
Girl, they have both those meetings, I can't tell you what. I don't know if they're, have we had a meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, big.
Big to coffee?
Yeah, big to coffee, I don't know, the shower. That would do additional, like, then, to, I think, additional letter today. So, all very simply, we, we surprise, like, then, we turn back into us. And is that one of the, which one?
Application, can't remember.
The eliminated sign. What better?
It was such a rush to get that on the agenda, because it was a pretty easy application, but I don't.
The cable commission was just year-end stuff. Nothing, proving bills, calling up big, big accounts.
Thank you. DDA, and I'm going to defer to our executive director, if you don't mind giving us some updates.
So, it's, it's funny, we come out of the holidays, and I feel like we have a break, and then we break back up, but most of our work has been on the TIP plan that obviously you guys mentioned tonight, but all of the taxing authorities are aware now of next month's meeting, and hopefully, if they are going shop, they're in support and have seen, especially in the past three years, what we've done as a DDA, and continue to fund us. We have some big plans for '24, and we're excited to share those with the community. Currently, we have a survey that we've had great feedback on, but that has given us a lot to think about for '24. We also have been applying for additional grants, working through commissioners for ARCA funding, so we anticipate a lot of placemaking again this year. National just selected Oxford to go to the national conference in May and to present on Washington Square, so we are excited about that to represent Oxford there in Alabama this year. We are working with Lake Orion and their interim executive director now, now that Molly has left, just on all the plans for 2024. So, today, for example, we're going through Restaurant Week and Trolley sponsors, and extending our concert series to a longer concert series this year, as well as a longer summer market. So, there's a lot that is going on, and, but a lot to do, and a lot to accomplish, especially the next couple of months, through, through the TIP renewal. So, I appreciate council's help with that, and Joe, and Joe's staff has just been a godsend for us, so thank you so much through this whole process, and everything from helping us mail out another four hundred letters this week, so we really do appreciate it. So, that's about it, though, that's quick, but.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We don't, probably any trails, cancel meeting, anything you want to add, otherwise. Manager, staff, and attorney reports, Mr. Madore?
Couple things, the EV charger right here at the corner of Hudson and Westbury is now active. I only noticed it one morning when I came in, it was lit up, and of course, DT shows up in the dark of the night, I think, cuts those meters in. And it's funny, because I emailed the contractor who put it in to say, hey, do you have time, and when the other one's going to be in, and about an hour later, they set an envelope on my desk, and it was from State Electric. I opened it, and it was our quarterly cut from the charging fees, well, it must have been a couple days, it was seventy-six cents. So, they almost, they covered your postage.
Put that towards parking.
Yes, right. The Open County Parks Grant information is not available yet, I know I brought it up last month and talked about perhaps if we wanted to consider applying again this year, maybe scale back our wish list, might be better, but they don't even have the applications out over a time frame yet. Four samples were done yesterday in our parking lot for our parking lot project, so that continues to move forward. I don't know if they've hit Park Street yet, they hadn't.
They did, I saw them.
Okay, all right, I know we repainted it, Don remarked it again, we, the mistake came through for it, but we hadn't seen when it would be there, but, so, okay? Very good, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Diggs?
I'm good, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Hey, council comments, Porjo?
Congratulations, do you have a university mission?
Somebody had to say it.
All right, nothing for me, I'll move to adjourn and.
No comments on you, then?
Go Lions, eight oh four.